Oh no, not going outside, are you?
Oh yeah. It's awful.
So what do you think of those big mountains on Mount, like maybe July? These are huge mountains.
Oh yeah.
And they're icy.
I think a lot of people have this. Took a little outside look.
Yeah, this is a blizzard.
Yeah.
But it wouldn't help. But I mean, this area is nice and dry, so that's good.
It wasn't really forecasted too far in any bad sense.
There it goes.
Teenage children.
Yeah. We made it though, it's not good.
Do you have a good?
Maybe too.
Looks like you basically filled that entire container full of water.
That's what it looks like. They're at the clock right now. About seven o'clock, right? You guys looked up picture? Good morning, John.
Good morning.
How are you doing? Surviving snow? Surviving snow?
No, didn't. Looks like you guys did alright.
Oh yeah. Yep.
Didn't have one, little slip on the way here.
No, none. None at all. What name? Wouldn't there be semi off somewhere in Jackson County?
In what?
Wouldn't there be semi split off somewhere in Jackson County right here?
Something similar.
I thought there was, and then that name is gone. Like, seeing things or what?
I think only it was still yesterday.
Well, no, the one in Jackson County is. But I thought there was one up here in Naperville just south. It was still on Tweel, so maybe they're able to find it out, I don't know.
Do you guys have a quick minute for us?
Dick's gonna be here, yeah, Dick's gonna be here at nine, correct?
They don't have you back on the agenda.
Oh, did he go off the agenda?
No.
Oh, okay. Do we have anything until nine fifteen?
Um, we don't have anything until ten thirty, actually.
Okay, then we got a quick minute for you.
Yeah.
As soon as we get, as soon as we get started yet.
Yeah.
As soon as we get open for... So there's an update. Did you take your student education why would come in? No?
Oh, is that right? I don't want to talk right here.
We basically just look over, just to make sure that there's not somebody getting paid forty thousand dollars in the morning.
Yeah, I got it.
Can you understand? I'd love to spend some money. How would the technology?
That'd be great. Are you gonna bring up, um, Aaron?
Shut the door.
Okay. These two, the resolution? Oh, you see?
Yeah.
Um, well, they're gonna always do that for public cases, because they have taxes.
Is that something that you sent?
Send them.
Yeah, sending them to me. They're probably gonna just do something like, it's a disclaimer to say, contest the matter for tax money. Eventually, if they do actually propose a pay tax as well. Yeah, well, usually the only reason they would is to have an in a header, pay for the year, which is pretty rare, but somebody's got a ticket or artist. Tax is over. So where did you come in next?
Why not?
Somebody told you eight thirty this morning.
Well, at least I put that in my head. And then, then somebody parked behind the vehicle, so I couldn't get out.
Now the truth comes out.
Did you give a damn?
No, but I... I thought I had plenty of time.
Yeah, that stinks when you think you're, you're right on time and find out you're...
What all those people doing in there?
Wait on you.
Yeah, I apologize, go ahead. That stuck in my head.
Judge was entertaining us.
Was he?
Need help?
Let's just, again, balance, so you don't conceal or...
Thank you.
And it does not have distribution yet.
Right, she said, yeah. She should be able to do that.
I'll just tell you guys, both my hearing aids went out Saturday, so I'm glad.
We need BL?
Eh?
Alright.
I'll get reports out today or tomorrow. I'm gonna try to wait till this is done distribution, before you have an...
So this has now eight days worth of business out? Two. Good morning.
Alright, I've got nine o'clock. We're gonna open with the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Tim, go ahead and point up.
Go ahead, gentlemen.
Okay. How are you, John?
Fine, good morning, Neil.
Morning.
Just wanted some clarification and give some... One of my tasks, the sheriff wants me to do is look for ways to reduce expenditures as well as enhancing revenue. So we've been doing a little bit of that. One of the areas where we found out we could make significant cost saving is in our area of food, food costs at the gym.
Okay.
So, obviously Walmart, since COVID hit, has been in some different plans that they have available for free delivery as well as a premium rebate of like two percent on orders of two hundred and fifty dollars or more. And just a couple of quick examples. When price spread at Walmart versus what we was paying our vendor, we saved a dollar ten on milk, was another good cost saver.
Really?
The fact we can save a lot of money by joining that plan. So I established a business account, or I started to, and then, of course, we had Janelle, our office manager, who called up to the clerk's office to talk to them, and they said, well, we already have a business account. You guys have our, our cards, and we do have the county credit card for Walmart. But, so anyway, I would have had them canceled that quickly, but then I found out they charge us ten dollars for delivery fee with the account that we currently have. They don't give us the same thing with the new account. Even though you guys have the full, full blown account, it's still not the same business plan that they have now, which offers free delivery and a rebate of two percent. So we just wanted to open up our account, and I didn't want to cause issues with the...
Is there any reason that they can't have their own account? And that way they get those benefits and it's kind of all billed out? And that way there's no demeritation of it?
We'll keep our accounts free.
Right, right.
And we have that. No, I just, I called Erin and, I don't know if Erin misses it, but I didn't want to get off on the right track. She said everything needs to come through you guys if we establish a new line of credits. I said, okay, well, we'll go through the process.
I think it would almost be better if you had your own separate, so that way every, when billing comes in...
Just make sure we give receipts, please. That's why I'm not wrong.
I know that's an issue.
That's why we've kind of downsized on a lot of those accounts, because we're having to make sure we're giving receipts.
That's one of the other tests I have, is getting, usually we've got some issues with receipts getting turned in.
Definitely.
I don't have a problem.
Yeah, it should help us, it should help us save quite a bit of money by... Yeah, it should help us, it should help us save quite a bit money by doing that.
Everybody kind of...
Yeah, I, I think that'd be a good deal, bill it that way. And I think, I'm agreeing with you, I think having your own separate account, that we can kind of keep things separated out. You're, you know, we know specifically what you're spending there, and you guys do too, so I think that's the way to go.
Yeah, cool.
All right. All I have.
Okay.
All right. Great.
Thank you, buddy.
Appreciate it.
Congratulations.
Have a great day, gentlemen.
You as well.
Scott, how are you?
Oh, nice to be back.
I'm back.
We're good.
You're real back, wanna talk about the phone call? Um, yeah, you wanna do that right away? Okay. I entertain a motion to go into executive session for matters of non-electric personnel. We'll get you a sheet, Linda, that we read off of.
Uh, moved going to executive session for personnel matters of non-electric personnel for...
Five minutes?
Five minutes, starting at nine oh five, reopen, five minutes later dislocation with Scott, Matt, Bryson, commissioners Todd and Christie President.
Been here a second. Been moved and seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Employee, well, employee report, that's what I'm sorry.
Thank you.
I need to put that up here.
Thank you. Been moved and seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All at the same time. All right.
Do you want to start one way first, or do it...
Yeah, those, those are already nine oh fives.
Nine oh six.
Nine oh six.
If we gotta wait. Yeah, we have a sheet, Todd. I've got a better sheet.
I know, I've got layers.
Need layers.
What you got?
The Brandon Henneman we were talking about.
Yeah.
The rate that we have, how big the number that is, and that was taken very early.
Oh. Okay. Do you agree with this, I mean, the termination?
Oh. I haven't figured this out. Yeah, we have our annual letter from this base about the cost increase that's going up, of course.
It ought to be getting close to kind of renegotiated after.
Has it returned to hands, Andrew?
We have any information, well, hands, they're doing on a 10%.
Yeah, I think we got that.
Yeah.
They'll remember what we can read.
We have, so, no information, we're very impression of their data.
I thought they were supposed to be starting.
Last time I drove by, they had their mayor's out there, that's all that's out there.
We get a new, whole new price sheet, assuming at some point?
Since February, something to go up, but prior to that. That's our schedule for LTAP training for this year.
Okay.
Before the asphalt roads on February 11th. Got Matt, Bob Miller, Braden, and Jason Megson already signed up for that.
Okay.
Uh, for the supervision role in the four teams, got Matt and Brandon so far.
Correct. Park City, Missouri?
No, it's Kansas.
Kansas, Kimbo and Shump.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a close.
Yeah.
Uh, in March, the public works, I've got a schedule for myself, and on gravel road maintenance, because there are many people, Don, Weston, and Jerry, that's...
Yeah, very good.
Probably get some more in the supervision also, after we have a meeting tomorrow.
Okay.
Okay. Apple balls.
Yeah.
I watched the video that showed that lane.
Yep.
About that, so, I didn't have any emails sent.
She's getting that worked out.
Okay. So, that kind of tells you about a little bit, um...
Yeah, I watched the video.
Okay. Uh, makes a big difference. They're about...
Huh? Looks like it makes a big difference?
Sounds like it does, yeah.
Yeah.
And, uh...
And I'm sort of... It's pretty dangerous. I say, if you wanted to go with that truck, it's pretty dangerous, I...
Yeah.
The way that it asks, yeah, we gotta get something done.
So, anyway, uh, about lenos, they're about 13 bucks a piece, figured we'd need about 400, said one ball for everything down, so 4,000, gotta pay, so, your 400 balls, so you're around 1600 bucks.
Linda, just to give you a hint of kind of what we're talking about, we have a, we have a tank that was designed to slip on the back of one of our semis, the tractor, keep the back centers, and it disperses the, um...
Dust control.
Dust control liquid. So, without these balls in there, all that liquid runs from the back, side to side, so tipping has them. So, we're gonna, there's no baffles within it, so this is an option to put in these balls, and then it makes it much safer vehicle. But...
Plus, we're not gonna fill this whole crack this year, too.
Yeah. And the, the truck, it, it was designed so that we didn't have to purchase another car, we have an existing semi. And then, when we're not used, it's empty, clean and stored. You guys have any input?
I'd like to sue the revenue lawyer.
I, I leave that up to you guys. You make that decision, what you want to do with it. I'm in favor of, you know, whatever. You do the research and figure it out, you know, let's get it done before the season gets over.
Yes.
Thanks for saying.
We're here now, it goes to keep things on order, and we get off, uh...
Okay.
So, we do it on weekends now.
We'll...
Use the money.
Not yet.
Okay. As soon as I get that, I'll...
You might find out what the lead time is on this, so you know.
I'm gonna talk to him too, about if there's any price reduction for quantity, you know, if that works, 400.
And I was thinking, you might check with the fire chief, Jeremy Andrews at Hoyt, and see if he want real experience with it. I think their tanker truck, that's what they did in that.
Okay, what's his name?
Jeremy Andrews. I'll, I'll get you this, I'll text you this. I think they utilized those, and might be able to get some advice from him, whether they like them or not.
I would, I would definitely check and make sure that the chemical is compatible with all the streets.
Well, I saw that bottom is for, food grade for diesel fuel, so, yes, I will check that.
Yeah.
Uh, next, on my list here, we got, talked about Q4 road down here off of 150, whether to close it or not. Little background on it, uh, you drive about a half mile up in there, and then the trees are overgrown so much.
To the south, you go along?
150 to the south. Uh, trees are overgrown, it hits both sides of the pickup truck. Going around to the 142 side, coming the other way, there's already an over closed sign that's there, and a big pot of dirt running across the road, so you couldn't get through there anyway. To me, uh, when the sign at first said road closed, just to keep people from running down there, and they had complaints, just wanted a plan in there, so they went in to cut their fence, uh, because apparently they could get turned around.
So, they just cut all six wires, go about it, and after he turned around, he came back and cut, so...
Already then.
So...
So, anyway, wanted to, all right, put the road closed sign up there, and, uh, probably should go down there maybe with the, uh, little mower and trim some of the trees down, not the whole way, but the ways down, uh, get past the guy's gates.
And then, Todd, would we, would we need to do a resolution, or just check to make sure, see if there's a resolution on that road? Are you being close, since it's the sign up at the other end?
I'll just keep that in mind.
This is what we're talking about.
This is a different road. Well, this is, this is a whole different road. The situation came up last week, I think, or week before, um, constituents complained about it, and, um, they went down and looked at it, so if we can't find a resolution, maybe it would be a good idea to go ahead and create a resolution, and then send a notice to the adjoining landowners.
Well, you want to really vacate, or you wanna...
Not vacate, just close it. Which is what we did out here, south of Denison.
Okay, is that a minimum made for already, or is it...
It's not...
There are lines up there, right?
Is it rattle?
Well, it's not on the list, if you're looking. The, the one you're trying to make, is that on it?
No.
Okay, so this is a policy, definitely, of all, um, yeah, separate, I would say, separate...
We're just gonna create that, and then also send a notice.
Yeah, I think you gotta detail out, and then consider first, first, public safety, or something similar to that.
Because it can't get all the way through, so...
Yeah.
Well, I'm, I'm curious, it's already got road close on, on one end of it.
That's...
You know, somebody got to put their, like, guess what, yes, but...
The, the house is right there on that corner, the road down, it's kind of like they've taken over part of the road as their driveway to pull there, because they run semi, and things like that, so like, there is a house right there, and they do use the road to come off, and then the driveway goes this way, and the road's far to here.
So, is this, what interest do we have that you actually put in that desert road? Is it a section line, or is it, I'd give it was dedicated originally, or...
I think that's what the research is gonna have to find out. But, but like I said, if it's, if it's got a road close on on one end of it already, I can't imagine that it's just closed from one end, the other end's open, so I think we'll need to do a little research, find that out.
And hopefully, they have insight on it. It is.
Yeah, well, it's just, I always try to go back and see what, how that was opened in the first place, and whether you do have a road there. It's not a section line, or, it's just a hotness. It's something that's important, you know, and, you know, anything can happen, somebody...
This shows a problem, Matt. All right, I'll wait to hear from them. Uh, services, uh, sounds like we got about six of them, we're gonna do this week, we're trying to get them, um, because the last week their heads out, so we got a few that gone past a few hours.
Yeah.
About six services.
Okay.
Uh, asphalt, also more sand, uh, since we've got plenty of salt, so probably do that, and, uh... Right now, we're fixing chains, and probably get some brush files this week. Uh, we have almost 100 calls come in this last week, and we got all those resolved, so...
Yeah. I will tell you the, the feedback I got from the community down in our end was, you guys did an excellent job. People were surprised that in two days, you could get what you did done, so thank you, I appreciate it. The community really appreciated it.
And I like those sentiments, I got stopped in Farm Show by a couple who lives out here to the west, southwest, and they said, this is the quickest we've ever had a road clean. So, uh, that, and just talking to various people around the community, they're, they are plunked up to death of how quick we got it done, and the shape that the roads are in. And, you know, any calls that I got that said, well, they only came past once, it's like, okay, we, we got it opened up, and then we'll come back and get everything wiped down as we can, but we need to get everything open, so, uh, get everybody out, so...
We're doing more than that today, it's wide than things else.
Yeah. Yeah. Tell everybody we appreciate you.
Yes. And I did have one call this morning, actually, P3 lane, they said that hadn't been hit. Uh, Milton White went down through there with his tractor.
I talked to Landon last Friday about that, so he took care of it on his way home, so...
And, and there's two roads down in, in the Hoyt area that typically kind of get missed right out of the gate. Um, one would be, um, the one that comes out of, off of S Road in Hoyt, goes east by that bank. Superintendent lives up there.
Okay.
And so, typically, he's trying to get out early to go check roads and do stuff, and then 123rd Lane, he got missed, so...
I went and talked to them last week, we got that all.
Thank you for doing that.
And it wasn't that they, they got missed, it's the dump truck went down, made a turn with cul-de-sac, and the cul-de-sac's not big enough to get it to the bus, so we went back in and picked up trucks and turned it out the other way.
Yeah, it, it's tough.
Yeah. Yeah.
And I did, I did have one where I, I thought about, uh, and this was, this was just a suggestion, not a complaint or anything like that. Two fourteen going out to, uh, the pines east.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, gentleman was heading the pines the day after the incident and after snowfall. And, uh, had trouble because he said it hadn't been hit very good. And I think since that's a medical facility, that ought to be put on a little high priority, uh, getting, getting that done sooner rather than later, going down all the way.
Yeah, we, we talked about that a little bit today because we've got some medical folks out there that need.
Yeah.
Uh, we are trying to put a new list together, also talked to them down, uh, about the bus routes.
Yeah.
Matt, right at the end of last year, we got a ton of nobody, and so we're trying to get bus routes and so we can be on top of that, plus all the new folks we have.
You need bus routes for all three schools?
Yes.
All situations, Fulton and Jackson Heights, tell them to give it to you ASAP.
Yeah, and Matt, uh, Mike Henry has your number, he was gonna chat to you and make sure that, he wasn't sure to contact anymore, and so.
They, they told me, I'm busy with them down there last week, that they emailed the bus route that same day in the accident, yes.
Okay.
That was your email address? What's your email address?
Mine?
Who do you, who do you want the bus route to get to?
Uh, public works.
Public works?
At J A C O N A dot com.
Perfect.
Then just kind of recap some of the stuff we have from our last meeting. Uh, we talked about that entrance on X four, X four and three twenty-six, we did not get to that. Uh, the DIP, you know, one sixty-two to Q, did not get to that. Uh, the road closure sign over a W of one seventy-eight, it's not done yet either. Uh, all fuel barrels set now on the small ones, except for Raymond I O C. The other two, you know, plate trip have been set, but they gotta get, uh, rest, I got here at the bottom and then they look like.
Okay.
We're right back and we are starting back in mulching again, down on tiny boards, big three nine.
Scott, I know the governor declared a disaster with this snowstorm, is there any relief that we can give by, you know, do some research and see if there's any funding that, because of that?
Pat Forty called me that day on that and.
She's always on top of things like that.
So, we talked about that and figured that Friday's the work to pay for, she doesn't get to roll out.
Okay. I just, when I hear that, sometimes there's some funds available for fuel and labor.
We, we can dig into it as long as, uh.
I mean, that, might not hurt to reach out to and see, I don't know what kind of paperwork would be involved in it, but it doesn't, a phone call or two doesn't hurt. Find out if there's, um, some relief.
So she probably did paperwork to get her the information over time hours?
Yeah.
All that good stuff.
There's stuff basically you can get, as soon as you can get.
Do that.
Anything else?
All I had except for the paperwork up today.
Yeah, we could probably go to executive session for a while, though.
Okay.
Did you have anything?
No.
Did, do you guys have anything else dealing with road and bridge as far as roads or anything, uh, that type of thing?
I'm.
Before we do that?
I'm terrible for anything vague. Simple one person, we only do that one, so.
Alright, I'll entertain a motion to go into executive session for.
Nicky, Tony?
Attorney client?
Attorney client?
Uh, I move to go into executive session for the purpose of attorney client privilege discussions for a period of twenty minutes, starting at. We'll go to nine thirty that way, give them a chance to clean out. Uh, reopen commission, then the meeting twenty minutes later in commission room, purpose discussing continuing illegal matter, claims involving county attorney clerk Scott, Commissioner.
Is there a second? Moves in second, any further discussion?
Now, all of those say aye.
Aye.
All of those say aye. That's great. He's going to keep it brief, so they're not pushing on project.
Spread out over here.
You can see.
How are you doing?
You may respect it. I just saw, I didn't plug my mic.
Hi again. Freezing holiday, snow. Got sick in between, you know, if you share stuff with love with me, you know.